Good evening. I would like to call the Select Board meeting for Monday, April 14th, 2025, to order and note that we will be entering into executive session and returning no sooner than 6:00 PM.
Mr. Chair.
Please.
I move to enter executive session for the following purposes. Item A, pursuant to master and a law chapter 38, section 21a3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining for all town unions and non-union personnel and our contract negotiations with non-union personnel. The chair has determined that an open session would have a detrimental effect on the town's bargaining position. Item B, pursuant to master and a law chapter 38, section 21a6, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property, easy for me to say, if the chair declares an open meeting law, open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the town, 62 Route 28. And item C, pursuant to master and a law chapter 38, section 21a7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements, the opening meeting law, master and a law chapter 38, sections 22FG, to review, approve, and/or discuss the possible release of executive session meeting minutes dated December 30, 2024, January 6, 2025, and January 13, 2025.
Moved and seconded. All in favor. Pete?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Michael?
Nay. No, aye.
Here we go. And I'm an aye.
Five, zero.
Meeting. And I would like to call the Select Board meeting for Monday, April 14th, back to order. We began an executive session and we took action on item C to approve minutes. If you all would join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Staff comment and announcements. Anyone from staff tonight?
Mr. Chairman, do you want me to use that opening to talk about your schedule for the next two weeks?
That'd be great.
So the Select Board will not be meeting during the week, next week. I believe that's the week of April 21st. The next meeting then would be April 28th?
Yes. I'd like to get the board's consensus on that. Just...
Sorry, I wouldn't have announced it. It was my understanding.
Yeah, no, I, I, that's why I said on the way in, I'd just like to...
So there are no staff comments, Mr. Chairman?
There are no staff comments. What is the consensus of the board for next Tuesday?
I'd rather meet because I'd rather not sleep over every meeting.
You'll be out of here quick tonight, huh?
Yeah.
So you want to meet?
We'll see. Hasn't happened yet.
I know you don't want to meet.
I think you should all meet.
You think we should meet?
You should all meet.
You have staff considerations regarding the meeting. That's why I understood you weren't going to meet.
Michael? What does that mean?
I don't care.
Julie?
I'm fine with not meeting. I'm fine with meeting. Either way.
I guess I would file a question back. Mr. Chair, is there anything to meet about?
Well, I don't have anything to meet about. I think Don may have a concern or an interest.
Signed up for meeting every week.
Then we will be here next Tuesday.
Well, do we really have anything?
I, I'll, I, I don't know what to do right now, to be quite honest.
Well, I mean, I'm in favor of not meeting if there's not a heavy agenda.
And if you're telling me that we have nothing at all in mind for the week after either, then I'm okay with skipping it. But are we just pushing forward that which we could have met over last week? Our meetings are incredibly loaded with stuff and people aren't getting home. We are taking five hours typically, sometimes four. That's unreasonable.
I, I think we are. I'm sorry?
But that's an unreasonable amount of time. If we have the opportunity to parse those things out over two meetings, it would, everybody would be going home still cognizant of what they just did.
If the meeting's too long on the 28th, I'm not coming.
Thanks for that.
Joe, could you just articulate staff concerns?
You don't have staff next week.
There you go.
No concern. Staff doesn't. Sorry, couldn't resist.
Wouldn't be the first time I was outvoted.
With this straw poll, I'm a no.
No to me?
No to me.
Julie?
I'm a no.
And I'm a no. Okay. So that's three. So now, Joe.
Staff comment would be it's the staff's understanding the board will be meeting next on Monday, April 28th, outside of a special meeting later this week.
Thank you. Long route. Any other staff comments? And weekly briefing, Joe?
Sure. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Again, this is the Phase 3 sewer construction weekly briefings, the look ahead for April, the weeks of April 7th and April, excuse me, through April 18th. No, that was last week's, I think. Let me jump ahead. As you know, construction continues on Two West. Work right now is still in the area of Martha Eaton Court. Martha Eaton Court, that road is, remains closed to through traffic. Same on the Standish Woods Circle. Road remains closed for that traffic. And 1E, work continues in and around the Church Street area. And again, there are traffic impacts on that. And this is work that's expected to be this week and next week. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Joe. Anyone for public comment and announcement?
Martha, Jennifer, East Harwich, Chair of the Capital Outlet Committee.
Good evening.
Hi. I'm, I just wanted to say publicly thank you to Jeff and Pete and Joe and his staff for having that meeting last week with Chatham. I'm not going to talk about the ins and outs of the meeting, but, and I know, I'm sure there are a lot of people that might not agree with me, but what I would like to say is, I think you represented Harwich well in what was a difficult conversation. You kept your composure. Not sure I would have been able to. And I appreciate you having that conversation and at least laying out our thoughts on the sharing agreement and how it's working and what some of the unintended consequences of it are. And hopefully that's a basis for us to all move forward positively. But I appreciate your positivity and the fact that you had the meeting and, and that you represented the town very well. Thank you.
Thank you, Martha.
Anyone else for public comment?
Oh, sure. Thank you.
Hi, Kristy Lynn Harwich. First off, I want to thank the Select Board for their time and dedication to the town. You don't have an easy job, especially this time of year. So thank you for your dedication. I'm here tonight as a taxpayer and community member to ask you to please vote yes on the middle school restoration project. I brought here tonight my three kids, two of whom who are Montemoy students and one who will be when he's old enough, because this is important to my family. My oldest is in third grade and may be in the middle school in two years. You know, whenever budget decisions come around, it's always centered around numbers and money. But I'm here tonight to remind you that this decision goes beyond money and numbers. It's about people. I'm hopeful that we still live in a community that looks to take care of each other, young and old, and for just over a dollar a week, will protect our young kids and their amazing teachers and the staff members of Montemoy. I can't imagine that we would, that anyone would choose to put any child, friend, neighbor, relatives' health at risk for a dollar a week. These decisions, choosing to take care of the people in our town, is what makes it a community. So when it's time to vote, please vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Anyone else? Public comment? John, I see you. I'm gonna, I'm gonna call you up soon, okay? Thank you.
Hi, Paul Wittstein. I live on Mary Beth Lane, and I just also want to urge you to support the middle school project. I think that negotiating with Chatham over our agreement is important, but I think the two issues are separate. And the risk of the price tag just going up and up and up while we're busy negotiating is really too great. And we should really just get the ball rolling on this. Thanks.
Thank you. I'm gonna go online to Mr. John Carey, who's got his little virtual hand up. John, can you hear us? Yes, you can. You're on mute. Hold on, we're gonna see if Matt can help us. Be good, Matt?
Keep talking, John, again.
John? Nope, not yet.
We have audio. Set it up. It's on John's end.
John, is, we can't hear you. You're...
John, can you hear us on our end?
Yeah, we can hear you, John. Well, let's do this. While John and Matt may be working on that behind the scenes.
Church.
Church. Thank you, John. We appreciate, we appreciate your input. Is anybody else for public comment? No one else for public comment? Okay, I, if it's okay with the board, I'd like to take new business item B out of order as the representatives for Mollet Corporation, DBA Valumart are in the audience, right? Okay, great. So if I could get a motion on new business item B?
Mr. Chairman, if I could.
Please.
This is the renewal of the 2025 seasonal all alcohol packaged store. Staff has reviewed and recommends approval.
Thank you, Joe. Someone make a motion if you please.
I move that we, I move that we renew the 2025 seasonal off-premise packaged store liquor license for Malik Corporation, DBA Valumart, 435 Route 28.
With any restrictions that had previously...
With any restrictions that were in existence.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five, zero, Joe.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you all.
Mr. Chair.
Please.
Are there any members of the board that would like any items removed from the consent agenda before I read through them? Hearing no one. I move to approve the consent agenda, including item A, vote to accept a gift from the Council on Aging, from the Friends of the Harwich Council on Aging, the amount of $11,225. Item B, approve the Select Board meeting minutes for March 31, 2025. Item C, approve the resignation of Frank Guicek from the Golf Committee and the Capital Outlet Committee effective May 1, 2025. Vote to approve the following committee appointments as recommended by the Interview Committee, and I apologize for any mispronunciations. Marilyn Rotts, Board of Appeals, alternate member term to expire June 30, 2027. Ann Newman, Planning Board, full member, term to expire June 30, 2025. Paul Mann, Historic District and Historical Commission, full member, term to expire June 30, 2026. And Ann Pittson, Cultural Council, full member, pending vacancies on June 30, 2025 or prior, term to be...
No one?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Done.
Just so the board can hear this, we're kind of stuck with the Cultural Council. Right now, there's no place to put anybody, but in short order, there's going to be, I think, four vacancies. And so it's kind of really important to have people queued up. If anybody's listening out there and they have interest in this, it's a really important commission, and we encourage you to apply for it. But in the meantime, that's why we put the name out there, so that this is all ready to go with, at the moment, somebody leaves. But we did query people, and everybody really did want to play out their term until June 30th, so that's why it's this way.
Thank you, Don. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero, Joe.
Thank you.
Now we'll move to new business. Discussion and possible vote to designate special municipal employees, including Montemoy Regional School District School Committee. Joe, do you want to...
Yeah, so the board should see in your packet, I'm gonna refer to it as the current, although current is a little bit of a misnomer. The active list of special municipal employees, this is relative or related to Chapter 268A or the Conflict of Interest Law. I think queries that come into the clerk's office, our town clerk unsurprisingly has done a superior job of analyzing the list and reviewing with counsel. Specifically, if you look on the list, you'll see on page two, there is a reference to School Committee. At the very bottom, you can see there is a reference to the last time that the list was updated by the town. That particular vote, by the way, does not relate to the School Committee matter, but it was last added, deleted, or changed titles on September 6, 2005. So at present, that does not include members of the Montemoy Regional School District School Committee. So the question before you is if you intend to allow those members to be designated as special employees, because the reference on the list was to the Harwich-only Town of Harwich School Committee.
Thank you, Joe. And that's obviously, this would be the recommendation of administration to vote this.
So there's an immediacy regarding members of this committee and potential members of the school committee. My recommendation would be that whatever the will of the board is relative to that group, however, this 25-year-old document could use some updating, excuse me, 20-year-old document could use some updating in the future, but right now it's relative to the Regional School District School Committee.
Thank you, Joe. Anybody on the board? Don, please?
Just out of curiosity, are we parsing out, is this universal to the whole Montemoy School Committee, or are we only designating those members that we elect from the Town of Harwich as special employees?
I believe it would only have the effect of Harwich members of the school committee.
Anybody else?
That's my uninformed, non-legal opinion.
I would support a motion that accepts them under our liability as a special town employee, only to the extent that they're the Harwich representatives to that committee. So I'll make that motion.
So I'll move.
Moved and seconded. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five, zero, Joe. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Michael?
Saw John Carey that wanted to speak earlier and logged off and logged back on. Maybe it works now.
Thank you, Michael. John?
Can you hear me okay?
There we go. Thank you. Yes, we can.
Yes, John Carey, West Harwich. I know the town's dealing with a lot of important items this time of year, but I was curious if there was an opportunity for the board to give us an update on the West Harwich Baptist Church. We're down to nine months till that thing could end up in a landfill. And I just can't tell you how important that is to what we're trying to do in West Harwich in terms of preserving and creating a historic district. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, John. I'm gonna defer to town administration for a little guidance as to the latitude of where we can go with this.
You do not have a open session topic that, I do not believe you do, that ties back to that issue.
Right.
Therefore, unless there was a Select Board member report or something, there's really no mechanism by which you could discuss this matter. That's my understanding.
Thank you. Michael?
We certainly could agenda it for the 28th.
Yes. So that, that, that will be an agenda item for the 28th. And as, just so everybody understands what you just did, that was under public comment. We had a technology issue earlier. So what, what you just presented was under public comment. We can't really reply to that. We don't have an agenda item tonight. However, thank you, and we'll get it on the agenda on the 28th. Thank you. All right, next item. Old Business A, discussion on Select Board Subcommittee Meeting Held on April 8th About the Montemoy Regional School District Assessment. First, I just want to say thank you to Select Board Member Pikarski for being part of it with me. I, you know, and to all the residents who have reached out to me and thanked this board for initiating the conversation. Pete, do you want to start with your debrief?
Truthfully? I'll make a few comments. I'm not going to rehash the meeting. Anybody that wanted to watch the meeting has had the opportunity. What I'll say is that in the end, regardless of opinions, the, the exercise was worthwhile. It was a conversation that needed to be had. There may have been a different thought process to what was going to be accomplished on the 8th. It certainly wasn't the time or the environment to negotiate. It was strictly an opportunity to request additional meetings that could potentially lead to reopening the regional school agreement. And if we take them, Mr. Shell on, on face value, he said that he is willing and able to answer the call should we reach out again. And I believe, Mr. Chair, you stated that we'd reach out sometime after town meeting and see if we will set up an additional meeting with them. But again, overall, I'm not gonna weigh in on the pros and cons as far as the back and forth. The meeting speaks for itself. And again, I believe the message that we wanted to convey about some of our concerns and the residents' concerns was conveyed.
Thank you, Pete. And I'll, I, I do have some thoughts on the meeting, and I think the Town of Harwich is owed a debrief. And like Pete, I, I don't feel I need to get into a deep dive into the back and forth of the meeting. I, I also feel that the videos, the meetings and the videos that are posted speak for themselves. I'm referring to the, the 2 o'clock meeting that, that we had here. I also refer to the meeting that the Chatham Select Board had that night, post our meeting. You know, I do want to make it clear that my intention, at least my intention, and I do feel this board's intention, is to look forward and not look backward. History is important, but I think the future is more important, especially in this case. So I'll share my thoughts regarding the meeting. You know, you only get one opportunity to provide an opening statement to set the direction of a conversation. And I did choose my words carefully. I spoke of cooperation. I spoke of partnership. I spoke of honesty in future meetings and a genuine interest in us working together for the benefit of our children and our district. I was, I, I believe that the meeting took a bit of a different tone immediately. And some of you may have missed it. I certainly didn't. Mr. Dyken's opening statement after I made my, my statement, where he said, "Thank you, Jeff. I guess it's good to be here." For me, that spoke volumes. That gave me an understanding that they were here to not listen, but to respond and defend. And they know why they were here. They knew exactly what they came here for. It was a listening session. It was an opportunity for us to explain the position that Harwich, not the Select Board, but the Town of Harwich has with respect to the future of the funding formula in the, in the Montemoy Regional School District. So I, I don't know how, how Pete felt at that time, but when, when I heard that, I thought that this has now taken a bit of a different turn than I thought it was going to take. I received an answer to the question that I was looking to get answered, and I received more information, information I didn't think I was gonna get during that meeting. And Mr., Mr. Pikarski mentioned that Mr. Shell did say he'd pick up the phone, he'd take my call. But he also added, on the condition, in my opinion, based on how, I can't remember exactly how I put it, but how, how we vote at town meeting, or something, something like that. I, so, so yes, future meetings are, I guess, in play, depending on how the Town of Harwich reacts during town meeting, specific to the, to the project, the middle school project. And then through watching the Select Board meeting, Chatham Select Board meeting that night, it was also made abundantly clear, more information than I was looking for in our meeting, that all five of them have no intention on opening the regional agreement. That was made very clear at their Select Board meeting that night. So, you know, allowing them to continue to talk during the meeting just gave more and more information, at least for me. And now I have clarity. I have clarity as to precisely where Chatham sits with this regional agreement. That's about it for me. You know, I, I, I feel the same as Pete. It was worthwhile. And I look forward to more conversations. I just hope that there'll be a little more clarity as to why we're sitting at the table. And one, one Select Board member in Chatham said, "Harwich didn't even have a plan. They came to the table without a plan." Well, we had absolutely no plan, other than to listen and understand. And that's exactly why I asked for that meeting to be held. It just made me feel like they didn't hear a thing we said. And, and that's okay. In, in, in all meetings that I'm in, I strive for clarity. If there's agreement and clarity, or clarity and agreement, I'm thrilled. If there's clarity and disagreement, I'm also okay with that. I don't, I don't think that, that they walked out of here with any clarity as to where the Town of Harwich sits with this funding formula and, and the compression it's gonna place on the school district going forward. So I'll leave it at that. And I'd like to hear from the rest of the board, because I'm sure they've watched the meetings, or at least one, and I'm sure that they have opinions as well. So does anyone on the board want to weigh in on, on their opinion of the meeting that took place? Michael?
I'm not gonna add a whole lot, Jeff, just to say that thank you guys for having that meeting. It is crystal clear where they stand right now. I do hope that the parents and the people that are directly involved and gonna be impacted by this continue to speak to their friends and families in Chatham. As we saw around this middle school project, it was held off, and I'll publicly say I am gonna support that this year.
I'm sorry, can you say, I missed that?
I'm publicly gonna support the renovation project.
Okay.
The numbers, the number and the increase coming from Montemoy Regional is, is absolutely not something that this town's gonna continue to be able to pay. So we're gonna be cutting. And the only ones that get hurt on cuts are the students and the teachers. So the fact that Chatham doesn't see that and can't see the math in this and can't see what we've spent was a little shocking to me. And statements that are being made by board members about reopening the IMA, it's like negotiating with a terrorist. The wastewater system has nothing to do with the school system whatsoever, but they want to use that as a tactic for us to go away. If we go away in the Town of Harwich, and I don't know how many more conversations we want to have, at some point, we have to actually get to the voters and, and figure out what the process, besides both towns agreeing, to get the IMA opened and have the state look at it. So I would ask through you to the town administrative, to legal, to figure out what the process for the Town of Harwich to go this alone, to get a, a second set of eyes on this, before we have to start cutting programs and teachers. Sooner or later, town meeting's gonna vote no. Where they go on middle school project this year, I'm not sure. I'll stop my remarks there, with the exception of saying I'm extremely disappointed in the building committee that represented both towns not coming before the elected body and giving a presentation to the members of the taxpayers of the Town of Harwich. And I hope that people are prepared on town meeting floor for some debate on this. The one number that sticks from the presentation that we got in this $11 million ask is the fact that they're looking for a 30% contingency. If, you imagine if we went to town meeting with a project of ours with an open checkbook with 30% on an $11 million project as a contingency? They'd vote down, they'd vote it down in a minute. So there's been zero transparency on this at all, except for the meetings that happened over there. But both elected bodies should have been presented to on what this, what the report showed and what it was. And that, that was a failure, in my mind, and led to some of this board questioning what needs to be done and what doesn't need to be done. So hopefully people are prepared on town meeting floor to debate why this needs to be done. And I've already talked to several people that want to make an amendment to make the 30% contingency go down and not just give them an open checkbook. So I do believe it's gonna be some, gonna be some debate. But the next time a committee is formed to represent both towns, they ought to present at the executive bodies' meeting, and I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Michael. Don or Julie? Anything? Don?
Shucks, thanks. Disappointed, I guess is, is the word I'd use, especially when you start out with, "We have the kids and you have the buildings," as an opening shot. As a matter of fact, I know that I was scoffed at over the years for saying that this is pushing 80% and 20% in terms of the... pushing 80% and 20% in terms of the distribution of the student body. But that's clearly where we're at. We've got one partner who's a lot smaller than the other partner. I'm not sure what that means necessarily. We might want to add another partner to this agreement is one of the possibilities. That hasn't even been discussed, but something has to give. I will say, as to the particular project, several things. First of all, the numbers that we have gotten have been all over the map. It started out at a level that was about this big. It has ballooned. I'm not even sure that it's an accurate number, as we sit here tonight, what we'd be debating at town meeting, especially with materials and the costs that they have. I will note, and no one to this point has mentioned this, the building was renovated when it was owned by the town of Chatham, 100%. It was their building. It was their old high school. They renovated it to be their new high school. There's no flashing around any of the windows. We inherited that building in that shape. We didn't create it, and it wasn't wear and tear. It was something that wasn't even built into it. And that, I've heard from people that have said that they had had problems through the years with some of the symptomatic situations that the kids are experiencing now. I grew up with that, but I don't want any kid going to a school where it's problematic for them to breathe during the day. So I'm so sympathetic to the situation. My only question is, if not now, when? Because this was an opportunity to have a discussion about your student body is shrinking in proportion to ours, but you still have to have buildings to have a school. You're still, there's still electricity, there's still staff, there's still everything. And I would hate the kids to be held hostage in future year for real academic stuff that would have to be supported by a budget. It doesn't seem to me that they're tethered in reality, that as long as they can benefit from the larger town contributing more money, they're great with this, but they don't want to have any more skin in the game. They claimed that they had changed the agreement once before, absolutely, because the recommendation was to change the use of the Chatham Elementary School, and the Chatham parents were up in arms. And they insisted that they retain that building as a full elementary school, albeit with, like, one classroom per grade. There are things that have to happen in terms of running this thing efficiently to create an atmosphere where they can get the maximum amount of education into those kids. And it's not productive to just simply say, "You sign this, we're done." Because nobody presumed it was in purpose. So it is, as a matter of fact, built into the thing. It was supposed to have a five-year look over for people to be able to determine whether it was still a durable agreement and whether they wanted to change any part of it. It's not something we came up with. It was something that was already baked in the cake with the original agreement. So I would hope in the future, if we go forward with this, and I'm not even sure what this is again, because I'm not sure what the amount of money is going to be, and I would hate to be in a position where we agree to back this, but it doesn't get you where you want to go in terms of refurbishing the school, because there's a lot that's going on, and I understand that some sheathing is now involved below the siding. I'm not sure what that necessarily means until they peel everything away and we see how much that is. So the scope of the project is still kind of nebulous to me. I definitely would support the construction, because it's definitely something that the kids deserve. But the kids don't deserve the adults that they have around them right now. And I would urge everybody to take a deep breath and get back to talking realistically about what can be afforded without holding the kids hostage in the future.
Thank you, Donna. Julie?
First of all, I want to thank both you, Pete and Jeff, for having the conversation, because I think it was a good conversation. And although, you know, you may not feel like it was productive, I think it was productive in the sense that every difficult conversation has to start with communication. And I think it's not unlikely that both parties probably left a little frustrated, but I think that that's sort of step one in a difficult discussion. So I'm probably taking a different route here, but I was glad you had the meeting. I didn't think it was terrible. I think both groups brought up great points. And yeah, it's a tough discussion, and it does have a five-year review that we should be able to have these conversations. So I hope a continued discussion and dialogue finally gets both parties to hear each other in a better way. I think you guys heard them well. I think anytime you're the party being asked to pay more, you're hearing it with a different sort of version of what you want to hear. So I think that it's really pivotal that these discussions stay at the local level, because I frankly don't think, and I could be wrong, but I don't know how much the state's going to do for us at the upper level. So I always think it's better if you can solve your issues between the two parties involved, because it's the kids and the teachers that will benefit from working together. I did share a couple of things I had looked at, the Naussett Regional Agreement and the D Y Agreement, that they managed to get to a better incremental stage over a course of, I think it was three to five years. You know, maybe that's something in the cards, but I think that it's an important conversation. I hope it can stay at a local level. I hope both boards can work together in the future, because I really do think it's important. The other thing I want to say on that is, you know, any kind of scenario where both towns would go back to single systems just creates more money on both ends, because you're talking administrative costs that are no longer shared, you're looking at, you know, additional buildings. And speaking of buildings, I will say that, you know, we decided to, in my opinion, I believe, when we said we would indefinitely postpone on the middle school project, it was because you were having the meeting on April 8th. So just for the public's understanding, that's the reason I was okay with indefinitely postponing, because ultimately, we wanted to hear if there was any kind of conversation that might even come up at that meeting that would make us think somehow we were making some headway. Clearly, that's not the case. In any case, I do believe that when we had Montomoy in front of us, Scott Carpenter, Michael McMillan, and prior to their last visit, we also talked about the middle school project, and we talked about the escalating costs, and we talked about all the difficulties that they were facing. The last meeting, we had members of the building committee here. Now, they did not do a presentation. So we should have asked if we wanted a presentation, because I agree with you, Michael, it would be good to have a presentation to both boards, but I feel like I got adequate information. And so I plan on certainly supporting the middle school project, because if anything, it's just going to continue to cost us more and more and more. And the current instability at the federal government level lends me to believe that we can't look to that for any kind of stability. So I would say that it's very important to move forward the middle school project. People's health, students, teachers, other people, administration, and, you know, other workers in the school are at risk. We should be addressing that. I would not want any member of my family or extended family to knowingly have to go into a building that requires the repairs that that does. So I think it's incredibly important that we stand behind the repairs. And, you know, I can understand, and I will say for the record, I can understand that Chatham was a little bit disturbed to hear that we had indefinitely postponed it. I'm not sure that they, you did a good job in explaining why we did that. I don't really know that they heard that, but I hope that they hear what I'm saying tonight, and I hope the rest of the board, Michael, you've said you're going to support it. I hope we will get behind this and support it, because this is part of the regional agreement. So we can't be asking to reassess the regional agreement if we're not going to hold up what we're supposed to do, even though the expense is huge, and I get it. We've also been assured that it wasn't going to go over the $11 million, that it might come down. Of course, I don't know that that's true any longer with steel and tariffs and everything else. But in any case, my point is, I think the discussion was good. I thank you both for it, and I hope it can continue forward. I think there's a lot of times we start difficult conversations and we walk away thinking, "That didn't go well." But you know what? You keep trying, and you keep trying to have those conversations, because the end result is that you're, we've built a wonderfully strong school system with so many accolades, the academic accolades, the science and technology, never mind the sports, drama, all of it. We've built a wonderful thing together, two towns. And let's make sure that we continue to support it. But we have reasonable, rational discussions on what we could do better, because we can always do better. Both towns can always do better. So, thank you.
Thank you, Julie. I think at this point, I'd like to hear from the public on this, if anybody from the public... Oh, yeah?
Not the public, if I could...
Yeah, sure.
...just offer some thoughts before it's opened up?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry for not asking.
That's all right. Well, I'm that hybrid, right? First, to start out, again, the thanks, because I think select member Kavanaugh said it best that, you know, difficult conversations are difficult, but they have to be had. And you have, both parties have agreed to converse. And you did, I think, an admirable job, and when I say you, I mean all four of you last week. And as a, and as an adjunct part of your discussions and your process, I was encouraged by the fact that I heard your colleagues in Chatham make reference to relying upon the experts, if you will. And I took that as a nod to Jill Goldsmith and her finance director, Carrie Mazral, as their expert, Ed and I as your experts, so to speak, for Harwich, as well as Dr. Carpenter and Mr. McMillan. And we, as a finance group, meet regularly. And I sought the opportunity to be recognized tonight, Mr. Chairman, to sort of telegraph what I plan on saying the next time that group gets together. First, everything's negotiable. To Select Board Member McCaskill's comment about the IMA, I couldn't agree more with him. There's enough in the regional agreement that is negotiable, in my opinion. We know we're hamstrung, if you will, by the foundation enrollment or the foundational budget based on enrollments and per pupil and all that, but everything else can be malleable, as long as the parties agree to it and the parties make a compelling argument to DESI. And so for me, as that self-avowed optimist earlier, I retain that optimism that nothing is lost and all is still in play. The other thing I want to put out there is, you know, I've heard folks in both towns talk about the alleged fiscal crisis in the town of Harwich. And of course, I know the board knows how I bristle at that immediately, because it's inaccurate. There is no such thing as a financial crisis in the town of Harwich, nor have we ever claimed there is one. But as fiduciaries for our residents, taxpayers, and voters, for you to recognize the trends that are clearly occurring, and we can look at our five-year forecast where things are going, the chasm is only going to get wider unless there is that negotiation, unless we do rely upon areas in the agreement on capital and other expenses that could be negotiated, 50/50, or 100% and 100%. That's all still very much on the table. But when I was asked after the school committee meeting that I presented your sharpen, your pencils letter, so to speak, and since then, you know, folks have said to me, "Where do I think you folks are coming from?" And I've been leery to put that out there, because these are my thoughts about what I think you're thinking. You're still going through your budget deliberations, if you are, you have been going through your budget deliberations, your town meeting warrant. But, Mr. Chairman, you've heard me say it, and I think I'm, I have latitude to say it. What I've noticed is that the school district, because there's been conversation that the school committee or the school district really doesn't have a role in this conversation, and I couldn't disagree with that more strenuously. Specifically, the other elected body, the school committee has a role. And I've suggested that perhaps one of the glaring differences, if you will, is that when you look at the numbers of each of the three entities, the town of Chatham, the Montomoy Regional School District, and the town of Harwich, two of these entities look like each other and one doesn't. They build growth budgets. We generally do not. That's not a poverty statement. That's not a fiscal crisis statement. It's a recognition that, under our general fund expenditures, the two most expensive categories we have every year for the last decade are education and fixed costs. And in fact, the trend still continues that for the town of Harwich. 54% of what we expend right out of the gate is nothing to do with our programming, other than education and fixed costs. Education for us is 41%. Education for Chatham is 20%. They don't have that one big budget buster, if you will, that we do. And so I would suggest that perhaps the school committee start looking at it as though there's a value, perhaps, in acknowledging the commentary of the Select Board of the town of Harwich, and perhaps striving in the next year to develop a budget that looks more like what the town of Harwich does than a budget that does not match with how the town of Harwich operates. And I think that's a, that's the big thing that's missing, is that the school committee tends to make budgets that are growth budgets, that match what the town of Chatham's used to, but it does not hue to what the town of Harwich is used to. And I only put that out there because I think it is a fact, that there's going to be a day, probably sooner rather than later, when these budgets come before the town meetings. And what happens when a town says enough? No. Now, we know practically and procedurally what happens. Everybody has to go back to the drawing board. But I think that's what you folks are saying, and that's what I would encourage everybody else out there in the equation to hear. We're very mindful of the possibility of a no vote. Are they? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the time.
Joe, that was excellent. Thank you. Is that Brett? Brett, I recognize you, and I'll call on you shortly, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Richard Weis, Dark Harwich.
Hi, Richard.
Great discussion. Professional negotiator, I've always taught that when you have negotiations, it's always important to have all the decision-makers in the room. And I think you were missing a party. I think that third group, the school committee, should be a part of any future negotiations that go forward. And the previous speaker mentioned that everything's negotiable, except for one thing, the health and the safety of the students. It's non-negotiable. I hope you support the article, but I have questions of what is next. And, Mr. Chairman, if I can, to our chief procurement officer, if the vote is positive at town meeting, what happens next? Is there a contract as written? Does it go out to bid if it's not already bid? Is there an opportunity to discuss some of the items in the contract, like the contingency? And obviously, hearing the items that we're not sure what's going to happen. When we start peeling back the layers of the school, what are we going to find? I think that's one of the reasons for that large contingency, and it's a concern, because it's sight unseen. But I would love to know what the process is after the town meeting vote. How is a contract awarded to start rectifying this problem? And again, I do ask that you support this article.
Thank you, Richard. Yeah, it's not our contract. However, Joe has his hand up.
Only because there was a reference to the chief procurement officer, but I want to, as the previous speaker, want to make it clear. My comments were only relative to Old Business A, which is a recap of the discussion on the budget. I have not spoken on the Montomoy project, because I believe that's going to come up under Agenda Item B, if you so choose. So everything I was talking about was relative to the budget and the regional agreement and not the article, because I don't think it's properly before the assembly right now. However, through you, Mr. Chair, generally speaking, were the article to be adopted and the towns agree to it, it then falls back to the project owner, that is, the Montomoy Regional School Committee, their administration, their procurement officers, to take care of the procurement itself. The towns are aware, and that's why you can see the explanation that I've written for that article, talks merely about the obligation of the town to authorize the spending and then to pay for the spending.
Thank you, Joe. Brett?
Hello, can you hear me?
We can. Thank you for being here. Or there.
Thank you.
There, but here.
My name is Brett Ford, and I'm from East Harwich. And as a parent, a taxpayer, and someone deeply invested in the future of our schools, I'm urging you to approve the middle school project. The Montomoy Regional Middle School is in clear need of critical repairs. Delaying these upgrades not only increases the eventual cost to all of us, but also risks exposing students and staff to worsening conditions. We've heard the arguments over cost sharing, but at the end of the day, this is about protecting our investment and, more importantly, the well-being of our children. Moisture damage and structural wear don't wait for budget debates to end. They get worse. Let's not let indecision become more expensive than action. I urge you to move forward with the necessary repairs before the cost, both financial and human, goes even greater for all of us.
Thank you very much.
My name is Ed McManus. I'm one of the co-chairs of the building committee. And in conversations with Chairman Handler, I've told him we are prepared with a presentation. We were prepared to present it tonight, but couldn't be fit into the agenda. We had hoped to do it next week, but because we figured... We had hoped to, to do it next week, but because we figure getting as much information out sooner than later would be better to do it, and we're certainly ready to do it the last meeting that you hold before a town meeting. And we'll go through what we found by doing air quality tests. We'll go over what we've found by doing physical destructive tests to the building to determine the extent, extent of the damage, and why, what we're finding there, why we're still holding on to a contingency. And part of the contingency is what's called a design contingency. It's not a contingency that you think something you may uncover and find, and it may cost you more. This is because we haven't, we're at basically the 20% design phase. And as we go along and finalize exactly how the work is going to be done, we'll then be able to better assess what those costs are, and either the costs are less than we've anticipated, at which point the, the, that amount is eliminated from the design contingency, or money is taken from the design contingency and put into that particular trade or section of the work, whether it be sheet metal work for flashing, or the extent that we find of sheathing that needs to be replaced. We know sheathing needs to be replaced around the windows. The extent isn't going to be known, really, until we take the siding, the shingles off and look at it. And, you know, you can, when you uncover that, it's obvious from what we've seen that the, the, places where it's failing is right up close to the window, but it doesn't make sense to just cut out little sections and patch in. We're going to be taking, you know, that whole sheet that's attached and, and renewing it. But we need to figure out and, and calculate that. And that's, that is something that'll happen as we go through the design process. Unfortunately, given the uncertainty of whether the approval will happen, we've slowed up our designers, because they, they cost money. And right now, you know, if it doesn't get approved and it gets hold over a year, we're going to need money still available to continue the, the repairs that will inevitably be needed through next winter, as, as the rain and the season gets bad. And also, we're, we'll have to continue doing the quarterly air quality tests, which are not cheap. So, we, we ask that the designers slow up until we get, know if we're fully approved. And once they're, we're fully approved, they're ready to go gangbusters and get this designed, out to bid, and construction beginning as quick as possible, so we can stop having to do all of those repairs and, and air quality tests as soon as possible. So, I'm hopeful we'll, we'll be, be able to do the presentation on the 28th.
Good. Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ed.
Anybody else in the public?
Mr. Chairman, could I just suggest, your, your Old Business A is about the assessment discussion you had last week. We do have Old Business B. There are at least two articles that I wanted the board to talk about. And again, that topic, I think you know past practice, is going to be on every agenda through town meeting.
Right.
Including the meetings that will be scheduled for the first two nights of town meeting. Not the third night, perhaps? So, if it's natural, we could progress to that, but I think...
I think he's saying move on.
Well, I think the messages are getting mixed, because I, again, I for one, don't want anyone to think that when I said everything was negotiable, that I was talking about the middle school project and not a regional document.
Sure.
Because I was only talking about that. And all the comments seem to be relative to the warrant.
So, I'll, I'll agree with you there. I think there's a blending here, because part of our discussion with the regional, with, with that, that joint meeting had a lot to do with, with the Monomoy Regional Project, Middle School Project. So, hold on, Mark. If there's anybody else who would like to discuss anything to do with the debrief, speak now, forever hold your peace. And now, we will move...
Jeff, that guy does.
Okay. So, on, on the debrief.
Basically, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mark.
And thank you, you two guys, for that meeting.
Just state your name for the, I know everybody in the town knows.
Building Committee.
Okay. Thank you.
Mark Keller. Just a couple of takeaways from the Building Committee. If this project is approved, it can also be, according to Mr. McMillan, the debt payments can be adjusted.
Mark, we're going to move, i- if, if this is about the project, we can cover that in the next Item B.
All right. No problem.
If it's about the debrief and how you feel the meeting went, let's give you the opportunity to speak. If it's about the project, just wait until the next Agenda Item and say what you want.
Oh, wait, but I, there's something about the assessment form.
Go for it. Please. Thank you.
So, I'll leave the debrief till afterwards. One thing that I did know, and Charles Gurska has spoken about this, there is an agreement already that is very similar to towns, very similar to Harwich and Chatham. Manchester and Essex. Essex, your steamed clams come from there. Working class, somewhat like Harwich, in there. It's a template that talks about 50% capital cost. It's a template that talks about lot lower, excuse me, instructional cost. It's there to use. I would suggest, before you have the next meeting, use a template like this. It's been in effect since 2007. Game it out and take it to the Chatham Selectment. I just went to their debate. They say they want to work with Harwich. Go prepared with this type of template, game it out on what the cost will be, and you may get some positive response. And I will speak later about your things.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Anybody else on the debrief? All right, hearing none.
Mr. Chair, I could just...
Of course, Pete.
I just want to touch on that. No, no, it's okay, because I want to touch on that one point. And, you know, you brought it up during your presentation this evening, that there were folks saying that we didn't come to the table with an ask. And I, I think we came with a very simplistic ask. And similar to, to what Mr. Keller just presented, I know, because I've been included on some emails with you, that we've had at least three, four, or five suggestions from townspeople as to how we could approach this. That wasn't the intent on Tuesday. There are multiple ways in which we could approach the, the issue that we're bringing to the table. This, the, the question is whether or not Chatham wants to even continue that discussion. So, my hope is that if we continue those discussions, we bring multiple solutions to the table. We, we negotiate with them in a collaborative effort to try to come up with the best solution for both communities. Not to drive home one plan down their throat and say, this is what you're doing, and, and we all walk away. There's, there's a ton of ideas out there. Let's utilize what's best for all of us and walk away with something that, you know, I think we could all be proud of. So, just wanted to put that piece out.
Well said, and thank you for speaking up. Ready to move on to Old Business Item B? Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's my understanding that of the articles placed by the Select Board in the warrant, there are two that presently have votes of the Select Board for indefinite postponement. I believe those are Article Nine, which was the middle school building project, and Article Twenty, which was the Great Sand Lakes, AKA Phase 3A construction, sewer construction project. First, if I could, Mr. Chairman, through you, just for informational purposes, not for the board, but this struck me last week at the conversation at the debrief. Not to go back to that. But the, the question was asked of you by your colleagues, what is the Select Board's support of what we know to be Article Nine? And when the reply was that it was the board's vote presently to indefinitely postpone the article, I think part of the surprise may be that I don't know how Chatham operates. I haven't looked at their charter with regard to town meeting motions and all of that, but I clearly know what we do here in Harwich, and that is, the Finance Committee is responsible for offering motions on all the articles. Now, as you already know, but for the benefit of anyone else listening, that if there is not a positive motion, something along the lines of motion to accept the article as written, or motion to adopt, or whatever, the moderator then, if there isn't one, and the only motion present is a motion to indefinitely postpone, Moderator Ford always asks, is there a positive motion? So, we know that the Finance Committee is in favor of Article Nine, so that there is a positive motion that's already crafted, because administration crafts all the motions for Finance and Select Board. So, that's what will be going before town meeting, is Article Nine has a positive motion offered by the Finance Committee for the adoption of the article. Point number one. Point number two, you have this on your agenda. Again, the specific topic is the warrant. You will have the warrant on your agenda for discussion purposes for any other article on April 28th, on May 5th, and on May 6th. So, that's, that point, and relative to that project. And then, with regard to the Great Sand Lakes, Article Twenty, same situation. There was a 3-2 vote of the Select Board to indefinitely postpone that article, but there is a positive motion that's being offered by Finance Committee. So, again, I'm looking at you folks, the Select Board, but I'm really talking to the broader audience, so that everyone's aware that if you decide to get into these topics tonight, it is relative to the motions that are expected to be made, and that is in support of both of those articles. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Joe. So, let's continue along with Article Nine. I think there's a speaker. Mark, if you'd like to come back and have your turn again?
Could've sat closer, Mark.
What's that?
Could've sat closer.
I, I'm out of shape. I need to get in shape.
Who are you again?
What's that?
One more time with your name.
Mark Keller, Monomoy School Building Committee. Just two, two points. I've already covered one. Number, the first point is, if the, the Monomoy School Building Project is accepted, and we accept that debt, Mr. McMillan already has $300,000 set aside for that for this year. What he did say is that if the agreement is changed, that the new debt on that will be adjusted. In other words, we're not frozen based on this agreement. So, that's a positive thing. The other thing, and this is, I just received it, Ed probably received it as well from the superintendent, there's a short-term grant out from the state for $50 million for energy-efficient windows and other things. Monomoy matches the stipulations of the grant, so there's a possibility that that grant could be obtained. There's only another month to get it in, or even less than that. It's awarded in June, and I think it does require, and, and Mr. Carpenter can confirm this, I think it does require a positive vote in town meeting. But $50 million, possibly, of which, you know, hopefully, Monomoy could get a portion of that for the new windows. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Anybody else? Thank you, Martha.
Martha, Deputy District Attorney, Chair of the Capital Outlet Committee. I'm probably going to say a couple of different things, but to Ed's point about if we don't move this forward, they won't have money to finish what they're doing. They are, the, the school already has $2.5 million in their pocket to, to, that we approved last year. I remember I got up at town meeting, I was against that $2.5 million, and not because I didn't want the school to move forward with the project, but I felt like it was late in the game. It was coming in front of other things that we couldn't even pay for last year, and it didn't feel complete. And I guess I'm a little bit frustrated that here we are, a whole year later, and you're saying, we don't know what it's all going to cost and what it's going to be. I, I'm totally for fixing the school. I have been more negative and a no from the point of view of having something to negotiate with, and, and only for that purpose. I still don't know where I am right now on this one. It's, it's a tough one. There's a lot of information still coming in, and it's frustrating at this late game, that we're still getting information about what it costs, and what's in the bid, and what's not in the bid. And we've already given you $2.5 million, and a year later, we still don't have numbers. And I just heard Mark say that Mr. McMillian, McMillan has money in his budget to spend something. I know when I, when he first put the middle school project together and presented to you, there were four times in a meeting where he said he had some money to pay for things, like engineering reports and, and mold remediation. And I thought, wow, how much does he have in his budget that he has that flexibility? Because I know if we went to Joe, as the town administrator, and said, hey, Joe, tell us about this building, and we said, do an engineering report and do, you know, do mold remediation, he'd come back and say, where's the money? We don't have the money. So, there's just a lot of, and I felt this way last year with the $2.5 million, which was nothing in the scheme of things, right? And we also have a roof to put on that building the year ahead of this. So, there's just a lot of squishy numbers here that you're asking us to make decisions on, and, and I'm not there yet. I just, it just doesn't feel comfortable a year after they put together this project. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
Mr. Chair?
We'll go to the board.
Just a clarification. The $2.5 million was just Harwich's contribution, right? Chatham also made a contribution? So, it's fair to say it's over?
It was $2.5 million. I think ours was $2,000.
Thank you.
It was all in.
Thank you.
Two and a half.
That's what I wanted, public.
Do you want to go back up, Ed?
Ed McManus, co-chair of the Building Committee. I sort of, I guess, and somewhat the latecomer into this, as I got asked to be the, join the Building Committee, which wasn't formed until, when did we start meeting? February? Yeah. You know? And it was, we were formed to coincide with when the architect was brought on to start doing the design work. And one of the first things we did was to interview several owners, project managers, and we brought one of, brought a firm on to ask, act as the district's owners' project manager. And this is, that's when we have been actually starting to get most of the information that's come out recently put together for us. So, it's, you know, it's, it's not like last year, in, the process started last summer, when, after town meetings approved and the votes approved the $2.5 million. And that, as I understand it, not having been there, that was an estimate basically just on doing a reshingling of the building, with very little thought on any of the additional repairs that would be required. So, you know, it is, it's frustrating for us that we're under the gun to try and come up with decisions, and I think luckily, we have a Building Committee that is made up of a lot of very local, very experienced building professionals from some of our local highly qualified companies, which has been a real benefit to our work. As to the grant opportunity, it's a, it's a $60 million grant. The applications due at the end of this month, and as Mark said, it would be awarded by the end of June. One of the problems is, though, that we'd, you, you have to, you have to have, to receive the grant, it, it covers, it's a green schools grant, so it's sort of, it covers a lot of environmental, energy conservation items. The windows we're proposing meet that, and so, to pick up the cost of purchasing the windows. But the windows need to be in the project for, for us to be able to apply for the grant. So, that's why, that's, that is one of the reasons why we have pushed ahead with including them in, in the project. The other, the other reason is, it's clear from the destructive testing, investigation work that we've done, to put this project back together right, we're going to have to remove all the windows to make sure that the flashing is done. And once you, once you remove them all, you just don't take them out, put them aside, and then put them back in. Because of past caulking that you have to clean off, it's a huge expense of just reworking the windows while they're sitting on. just reworking the windows while they're sitting on the ground. And they also are not what they call energy-separated, so they just, the aluminum frames just transmit the cold air right into the building, and so the new windows designs stop that. So, given that they're 30 years old, and can be expected to start failing in the next five or so years, it just makes sense to consider not replacing them, and having to rip them out, and start putting them back in five years from now. So, that's just a couple of points from what folks have made up, you know, in a perfect world, we'd love to have had all the answers ahead of time, but we don't. We're doing what we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, sorry, Ed, hold on.
Ed, before you walk away, did I hear you say that the grant has to be submitted by the end of this month?
Yes.
Okay.
And Scott, and our project manager, and McMillan are busy working at pulling it together. It's part of, it's based on the poverty level of kids in your school, and we meet that guideline, which is good, and the type of work we're doing is fully within and mentioned as part of the grant information, so we think we probably have a very good chance at it. And given that the announcement of the grant only came out at the beginning of the month, we hope that the competition for it will be less, because it's such a short timeframe.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Ed.
Joe? Just for the benefit of the listening audience, Article Nine is a request of the Montemoy School Committee, Regional School Committee, and the article itself, the language contained therein is identical, it has to go in front of both town meetings. And so it is an authorization ask of the two towns of the district, shall, to see if the town will vote to approve of debt authorized by the school district, yada, yada, yada. Second part, we, Town of Harwich, as we did with the original 2.5 million authorization, have a companion ballot question, question number three, where we're asking the voters that if you authorize the overall debt, Harwich's cost of that is $6,918,300, should that debt then be excluded from Proposition 2.5? So those are the relevant facts. One, the article goes in front of both towns for authorization, and then, two, the borrowing, the, excuse me, the obligation amounts are distinct and different, and we are looking to have our, have ours excluded from Proposition 2.5.
Thank you, Joe. Anyone else from the public? Anyone else from the board? Pete?
So specific to Article Nine, it sounds as if the, the Project Committee is willing to come before us on the 28th. I don't see a need, there's nothing urgent on our behalf to, to approve this tonight, or to change our position tonight. I'd like to hear the presentation. It wasn't all about a negotiating tool, we didn't, we didn't hear the final, and maybe it's not the final final, but the latest update on the project and where it stands, and similarly, I would have some concerns, you know, with, with the overall number. However, when you can ask questions and get, and seek clarification, it may put some of those concerns to bed. So, that's where I'd like to see us go with this, is have their presentation on the 28th, and then decide if we want to change things up after that.
Thank you, Pete, which I think is the perfect time for you all to come before us, so close to town meeting. And I'll just add a few, a few things. And while this topic is emotional, difficult, it, it is important, and I'm thrilled with the emails, the conversations I've been having with residents about this, because this is exactly what should be happening for something as important as this. And with respect to what we all agree upon, and I'll speak for Chatham here, is we have a top-notch school system, a school system that is second to none, the envy of many school systems in, in the state of Massachusetts. And I have a nine-year-old and a six-year-old, so I am well-vested in this. I am, I am committed to the school system staying the way it is, and even improving. At the end of the day, it is ultimately up to the voters. And, and I think, you know, the, the passion that has happened so far, and the energy that has happened to this point, is all well and good, but there is going to be a debate on town meeting floor, and I would urge all people who are interested in seeing this move forward, or, or voicing their opinion in the other direction, come, come to town meeting. That's exactly where this is going to get all, all hashed out. No decisions have been made yet, and that's where we're going to see the final. To Pete's point, I'll certainly consider my position of indefinite postponement. I think having the, the committee come before us will, will certainly help answer some questions. And then, as I said right off the bat, more interested in the future, less interested in the past. The funding formula needs to get looked at, it needs to be reopened. It's unsustainable for the Town of Harwich to continue to be part of providing such an incredible, incredible educational system for, for our children. The teachers need a safe place to teach, the kids need a safe place to learn. I understand the Montemoy Regional Middle School Project is important from those two standpoints. Moving forward, I hope to be the liaison to the School Committee going forward. I hope to be more involved than I've been so far. What I can say, though, is moving forward, for me at least, as Joe pointed out, and very well put, Joe, that the budget looks more like a, the budget needs to look more like the majority partner's position than the minority partner's position, and that would be a little bit more Harwich-facing. And future capital projects going forward need to be scrutinized, just as we're doing this one. So, April 28th, I think, Ed, if you want to make sure that that happens, and get the slide deck to us?
All prepared.
Fantastic. Does the board have anything else before we move on past Article Nine?
Just one last. It occurred to me, I should have mentioned this earlier.
One of the things that is still outstanding, obviously, given the cost, and the fact that they, the weather, and wearout, we're not proposing reciting it with cedar shingles, and we're looking at some alternative types of shingle look-alikes, and also covering, maybe doing some areas in clavord with some of the new polymer and cement board products, which all have a lower cost than it would be to do it in cedar shingles, to start with, but there's a huge range in it, and several different looks. To that end, we had four boards put together with the different types of shingle look-alikes, and different types of clavord, and had, four of them are leaning up against the Montemoy Middle School in Chatham, and four of them are leaning up against the, or, I'm not sure exactly where, but at the elementary school here in Chatham, in Harwich. So if you have a chance to go, go through and take a look, you know, then there's actually a pretty vast range of cost between, between the, the products. It could vary the cost of the siding alone by a half a million dollars, depending on what, what product is chosen, you know, based on its design and looks, partly, but also on its eventual durability, so.
Ed, you may want to stay there, thank you, Don.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, it's not actually a question to you, it's a statement. Given safe schools, and the fact that they're locked as soon as kids get in, and people will have to get buzzed in, it's not the most public of places, and nor should it be. Would you, could they consider putting that in town hall instead, because it's not just going to be parents that are going to be voting on this?
Well, we, we could, the thought was, by putting them in front of, up against the, the, the middle school in Chatham, people would get to be able to, be able to compare it to what the look of the building is now.
I'm talking specifically about Harwich Elementary School.
We can move them here.
My kids would go in there, you have to press the button after the school session starts, and I'm not sure that the...
It's outside.
But they're outside.
It's outside.
Outside?
Yes, they're, they're lightly attached, leaning against the outside of the building.
Again, I'm not sure that they'd be entirely thrilled if a cavalcade of public citizens coming...
As I understand it, it was to be located in an area that as people, as parents came in to do their drop-off or pickup, it would be visible to them.
Is it hard to get easels here?
Huh?
Is it hard to get another...
Well, these things are 10 feet tall, and four feet wide. You know? I'm not hoisting enough stairs.
Sounds like you have inflatable buildings, rather than billboards.
Yeah, yeah, no, these aren't, these aren't just little, you know, architectural rendition things.
Thank you, Ed.
Martha, Deputy East Harwich, I just, you know, since we know we have a roofing project coming up, could we ask the school to start that right after town meeting, so that we're not sitting here the week or two before town meeting, figuring out what the actual cost of things are, and maybe, you know, whatever their engineering reports they have to do, they could do them in the summer, and bring them forward in the fall, would just make it easier for people to get their hands around what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, good.
The, the roofing project has been accepted by MSBA, which means that they're going to cover 37% of the cost. However, with that, they get to pick the owner's project manager, and that person has already been picked, and has been on site already, to begin the process of scoping the project.
Thank you. All right, any more on Article Nine? Joe, do you want to open with Great Sand Lakes?
Sure, Article 20 is the Great Sand Lakes Wastewater Construction article, it is the town's article, it's, you can find it on page 23 of the town's warrant. Presently, the recommendation of the Select Board is for indefinite postponement of a, in a 3-2 vote, but as mentioned, the Finance Committee has a majority vote to accept and adopt, so there will be a positive motion at town meeting, and given that the project is looking to have an estimated cost of $35 million, this too is a corresponding debt exclusion ballot question, which is question five on the May 20th, 2025 town election ballot.
Thank you, Joe. Don?
Just to add in, I mean, as, as you're representative to the Clean Waters Board, there's a factual change that happened over the last week, week and a half. The intended use plan, which is what you have to be listed on in order to be even qualified for any of these things, was the draft plan, and it moved past draft into a final plan. I'm not sure everybody on the board knows, so I'm just announcing that. We're on the final list.
Thank you. Any other board members want to speak on Article 20, Joe? Is it 20?
Article 20.
Article 20? Moving on to...
Mr. Chairman, if I could, final comment again.
Please.
Unless the board says otherwise, you'll have a standard discussion on the annual town meeting warrant, and all articles therein.
Oh, I think we have somebody online, Anne Frichette, do you have your little virtual hand up? There it is.
I do, thank you so much for recognizing me. I was afraid that you might not see it. So, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I would like to say again to the Select Board that I encourage you to end your indefinite postponement of Article 20. If there are outstanding questions that you still have regarding any aspect of the project, I ask that you bring people to the Select Board meetings to respond to those questions. I am happy to help you in any part of this process to provide more information, but I encourage you to vote to support this article. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Anne. Joe?
So, through you, Mr. Chair, could you, if the speaker's still present, is there, is the proponent of Article 21 going to indefinitely postpone that article? Article 21 is a petition to article regarding Great Sand Lakes.
Oh, so you're asking the petitioner if she's going to...
Through you, if that's appropriate.
It is. Anne, did you hear the question?
I did hear the question, and I understand that my article is not indefinitely postponed at this stage, so I'm not exactly sure what the Town Administrator's asking of me.
Want to reply, Joe?
Sure, through you, Mr. Chairman. The question is, if you would indefinitely postpone Article 21, if Article 20 goes forward.
Did you understand the reply?
I, I do understand the question, and I am happy to speak about that on April 28th, at your next meeting. I'm sincerely hoping that on April 28th, I will also see Andrew Gottlieb from APCC, and, and other people that you will bring forward to answer your question.
Thank you.
My mic is off and on, I'm happy to speak at that time, thank you so much.
Thank you. Any board members, or anybody else from the public want to speak on this article? Hearing none, let's move to item 10, contracts. You got a motion?
Mr. Chair?
Please.
I move that we vote to approve a contract with RISE Engineering for the replacement of the condensing units at the community center in the amount of $140,598.
Second.
Moved and seconded, we'll give it to Julie, she was quicker. Any discussion? Pete?
Just want to understand the process, because as I read this, the end cost of the town will be $5,200. So, is that a reimbursable grant, is that what it is?
Correct, you're required to approve the sum total of the contract. However, you're right, if all goes according to plan, well, sorry, you're right, you have to approve the full amount, and the net cost of the town goes all the way down to $5,200.
Right, and so my point of bringing that forward, thank you, Joe, is that that leaves, you know, just shy of $290,000 from that 2024 annual town meeting article. But again, I know we've talked about it several times, but it's a lot of money, I'd like to see it get back to the town at some point, and I realize the project has to go through and finalize before it's available, however, it's a lot of money.
I have it written down, Pete, and we will bring that up on a future agenda. Anybody else on that contract? Moved and seconded, no more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 5-0, Joe.
Thank you.
Town Administrator's report?
Just a few items, and then a special mention. So this, there is a contract that was confirmed by me with Galaxy Integrated Technology Incorporated, and this is related to the 2023 town meeting, Article 16, which was capital. These were the authorized upgrades and technology replacements at the Emergency Operations Center at the Public Safety Building over at Sisson Road. And so this contract is for bringing the technology up to grade. The amount in question came to $26,463.87, and again, that was to Galaxy Integrated Technologies for improvements to our Emergency Operations Center. And then, secondly, want to congratulate our town clerk, she has gone through a rather arduous process, some solid candidates, as I understand it, as is her right and responsibility after, under Chapter 41, Section 19, she has appointed Jessica Goodell, thank you, as our next Assistant Town Clerk. So congratulations to Town Clerk Mitchell, and we all look forward to welcoming Jessica to the organization. Congratulations.
Thank you, Joe, thank you, Emily, for all the work.
And that concludes my report.
All right, Select Board member report, Pete.
If I could, Joe, I assume on that technology upgrade you were just referring to, that, that May 2023 article, that's depleted with that sum of $20,000, it looks like they offset the balance with their expense budget.
I believe that is the case, I will tell you that the forms that we have are not the standards, so... I will tell you that the forms that we have are not the standard, so still getting used to reading it.
Gotcha.
But I believe you're correct.
Thank you for that. Nothing else, Mike? I look forward to next week's meeting.
Where are you going to be, by the way?
I don't disclose any...
You kidding me?
You may just see the four of us show up.
We're going to be here Wednesday, potentially.
Don?
Yeah, speaking of Wednesday, I'm just curious, are we going to have an opportunity? Because there's a, a few of these, the list is all encompassing. And I said before, Pete had written as additional questions, were basically the ones I would have asked anyway, so. But a couple of these, I, I don't know that we should dwell on all that much. I'm not real interested in what motivated anybody to apply for the position, or what three things are most important to you in a position. It's like, what did you do for your summer vacation? It's more, I would like this to be focused on the qualifications and, and how they would fit in culturally with the organization that we have.
So if I'm hearing you right, you're asking to reduce...
Some questions.
Okay. So I've asked now for three, maybe four weeks...
You've asked to add.
No. I've said additions, changes, deletions, omissions. And I couldn't have covered it any more than that. So I will certainly continue to take, and I agree with you a hundred percent that that list will, if we go through that whole list, it's going to take...
A sleepover.
Right. So with that being said, I, I haven't heard back from anybody regarding removing. Actually, Julie and I had a little conversation about it, but I haven't heard from anybody about removal.
I did send you an email this afternoon.
I didn't see that.
That's fine.
I sent mine about just trying to condense.
Condense, and I got that.
I sent mine, too.
No, you didn't.
I said, actually, I'm okay with the question.
Correct. If there's any removals...
It's an email.
As, as it sits right now, that's where we're going with it. If you want to send me a, a couple of items you would like to see removed, I'm willing to take that email, but as my wife says, I'm not a mind reader. Julie?
I just wanted to acknowledge the Council on Aging for throwing a luncheon that I actually, I know this is stupid, but it was a luncheon, but I thought they had changed it and moved it to four. So anyway, I missed it. But anyway, so I will acknowledge that I missed it, misinterpreted the, the time. In any case, I think it's wonderful that the council honored the volunteers. They're, they're incredible, they do great work, and I may actually be there as a volunteer when I'm done here, so.
Excellent.
Anyway.
I hope Bill Galvin got that whole thing about missing it and...
Well, I'm just admitting, all right? It was in my calendar for four. The other thing, I just want to thank the police for addressing during the construction with the trucks coming down and the traffic coming and going on Austin Road. They did a fantastic job because things were getting a little hairy there on the road, so they did a great job in trying to calm that down, so. That's it.
Michael? Send it to you in an email.
Sure.
But the GHD, if we could get a update from GHD prior to the meeting on the twenty-eighth of the current cost of the Great Sand Lakes project, including the future purchase of the pumps that are going to be needed if we do said project, but I'd like to get as close as we can to an all-in number instead of an estimate.
Absolutely.
And then, and then the meeting on...
That reference was also to any grinder pumps that the town would have to purchase and release.
All-in.
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 And then, KICOD Commission made, in my opinion, another very unpopular decision, but seems to be the norm for me at least lately. Whichmere Beach Club, the subcommittee voted down the hotel expansion, and I'd like to get, possibly get Whichmere before us so that they can present to this board, so we could send a letter back to the commission that we supported. I know that we can't get involved in the regulatory process, but as it, as it appears, we're not allowed to have our representative come before us. I think that was the information we got back from Christie Senatori. So I'd like to get either Whichmere here or get us on the agenda for the commission, and I think the whole board should weigh in. As I read all of the staff reports and, and in-house, our planner, our Conservation Commission, and read all the letters of support and the letters of non-support, the support far outweighed the non-support, and I think that that eighty rooms would go a long way with hotel motel tax. And the bottom line is those folks are on the property on the weekend anyway, so it's whether or not they're going to leave or stay and leave more of their money and, and/or go stay at another town. So I'd like to at least have that conversation, and if the board supports it, send a letter to the commission that we do. As we talk about forming five hundred-bed of projects that, that we're only going to pay half taxes on and, and tax the infrastructure, we should, we should have the conversation on eighty beds, eighty, eighty rooms that are going to leave money here and pay a hundred percent of the taxes. So I'd love to have that conversation, but it doesn't look like it's going to be the twenty-eighth.
The only thing I would just kind of, Mr. Chair, the only thing I'm wondering about that is because I saw that Attorney Singer withdrew the application, so...
Because they were getting a no vote.
Right. No, I know, but I'm just saying, they withdrew the application, so for them to come in front of us with an application that's been withdrawn...
I don't even want...
I don't know the legality of it.
I only want a presentation to say whether we'd support the concept and then send a letter to the commission that we do. They're obviously going to put it back in, but I think we should at least, as a town, have some say since the planner and Conservation weighed in that they didn't really have a problem with it. They recommended some changes, which the applicant did, so I'd ask that be put on the agenda.
Sure. I'd like more information myself.
You and I can discuss that.
Absolutely. And the only thing I have to say is Julie must be super proud of your motherland Rory McElroy.
Oh, yes, yes.
Winning the Masters in the Grand Slam all in one day.
I know, right?
What a, what a tournament. So that's all for me.
He'll send you an email.
I'll send you...
He is from Northern Ireland at this point.
All right. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
For the record.
I'll, I'll put your next email in correspondence, so everybody can see one.
Thank you, Matt.
Well, my husband says he played for Ireland in the...
Motion to adjourn. Oh, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.